Good morning. Welcome to our May 1st, 2024 regular meeting of Chesterfield County Council. It's 9:00 AM. Called this meeting to order. Before I ask Ms. Anderson for our morning prayer and prayers of allegiance, please continue to remember our Councilman Gerald Miller. I talked to Mr. Gerald last Wednesday. He's now back in the hospital again. Please keep him in prayer. Ms. Anderson?
Sure. And the prayer that I have this morning is familiar because it's the one that I use pretty much every time I have prayer because I think it is so poignant and it's written by our friend and colleague, Lehman Mumford. And I just wanted to give him credit because I do not deserve the credit for this, but I wanted to share that. Okay, pray with us, please. Oh, Lord, oh, Lord, how excellent is thy name. May we be true to the civic responsibility entrusted to us. May our abilities measure up to the issues before us. Help us to be thorough in our investigations and factual in our presentations. Give us insight without oversight, discernment without distortion, fairness without favoritism. Give us strength to stand tall even if alone, for it is better to fail in something right than win in something wrong. Guide this meeting and remind us all that we do here today will be reviewed in the council halls of the last day. And finally, Lord, please be with our friend and colleague, Mr. Miller. Help him feel your healing touch and let him know that we are all with him. Thank you for the blessings that you bestow upon us. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. One two three, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. There is a need to amend the agenda to add Ms. Karen Short from the Alpha Center as an appointment. Mr. Ruffner, is anything in addition to that?
Unlike most times when the agenda is amended, since there won't be any action taken on this, it'll just be a presentation by Ms. Short, there's not any need for a finding of exigent circumstances. The council can just vote to amend the agenda to add that item as an appointment.
Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda? Looks by Mr. Smallwood, second by Ms. Burns. Any discussion? If you've done all them favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the motion. Karen's adopted the agenda. We move down to item four, the approval of the minutes of our April the 3rd, 2024 meeting. If there are no corrections or deletions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Ms. Burns?
Second.
Mr. Smallwood, any discussion? If you've done all them favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes have been approved. Item five, I think the bonds will be in pass for signature. We'll move down to item six, the appointments. We had scheduled Carolina Wildlife Foundation, but due to some unforeseen circumstances, they were unable to join us today and have requested a date in the future. So we move down to Ms. Jane P. with the WCRE. Please come on it, Ms. Jane.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning. Morning. And you?
Our litter trash day is going to be May the 10th. I hope all of you will participate. I hope all of you will encourage folks at your church, folks at your other civic organizations to participate in this. We've had lots of response from our towns throughout the county. Many of them have already had some litter pickups and they're doing some continuing progress. This morning, on my way to the courthouse, I counted trash on Highway 9. And the last time I counted trash, Diane Driggers and I logged about 350-ish pieces of trash. So this morning, only counted on the way to that I could see safely doing it. From the airport to Beaver Creek, 32 pieces of trash. From Beaver Creek to the Thompson Creek Bridge, that bumped it up to 57 pieces of trash. From there until I turned off to come into the parking lot here at the admin building, 62 pieces of trash and one milk and croc and alligator. That's a piece of red tread tire for those of you don't know. 62 pieces of trash. That's pretty awesome, you know, considering what we've had in the past. Couple things that I would like to bring to council's attention, if I may. We're logging in the GIS map. So many people are calling in and they don't want to put their name on because they're, they just don't want to do that, but they say they'll pick up trash. We have had a large number of people calling them suggesting areas that need to be picked up, but they don't want to do it. Okay. Of our garbage trucks, we've had two incidents just recently. One of them, I was on Pleasant Grove Church Road and trash was just blowing out of the back of the garbage truck. Well, when the truck stopped for the next one, I followed the truck. I jumped out and ran up and spoke to the driver and I asked her if she knew trash was blowing out from the truck. She said, no, no, no. And she said she would go pick it up. And then just a couple of days ago, our sheriff was following a trash truck on Highway 52 outside of Charal, coming back toward Charal, and trash was blowing out of the trash truck. He stopped the trash truck and he asked them, if council can do anything about maybe sending a letter to our trash people throughout the county, I think that would be a good thing to just let them know because I can understand if it's coming out of the back of the truck and you don't know about it, but you know, don't they have mirrors on the truck? Can't they see it? But anyway, if they could be mindful of that, I do believe that would help us. Perhaps the county can increase fines. I was in Sunset Beach recently and there's a big sign coming into Sunset Beach that says litter, do not litter, $1,000 fine. And also, we have, Ms. Burns can add to this, but she has been getting a large number of calls and maybe some of the rest of you have also, that on a dump site on Tech Road, the sheriff's department came out and went through the trash, which is what they do, and they found notifying information in it. So the people went to litter court. They were fined public service in the courthouse. I guess timeout, sitting in a chair in the corner, maybe. I don't know. But if there's some way that you might could suggest to our litter court, if someone is fined, let's let them pick up trash on the road. There is something about picking up trash on the road that will sort of make you think about it. If people didn't throw the trash out, we wouldn't have to pick it up. Is it better than 18? I don't know. You know, we had a pretty clean county after our big litter pickup before COVID. I mean, the county looked really good. We had lots and lots of participation. But then, of course, like a lot of things, COVID threw us back. So we're sort of starting over here. So anything that you can do or help this, WCRE radio and the link, our people are picking up trash. We are, our editor is picking up trash. She picked up some trash yesterday. Our morning announcers, all of our daily announcers, they're picking up trash too. So we're trying to put our money where our mouth is here and pick up some trash. But thank you. We're happy to do this. We want to make this town a better area. If you did not see last week's paper, I thought it was very ironic, there was a mattress on the PD River Bridge. And we got the town of Charal, I know it was in county, but I called the town of Charal and they said, oh, we'll send the bucket truck out and get it. So there's a big picture of it. I took the picture of it, but a mattress on the PD River Bridge. Now, there are a lot of other mattresses around the county. And I need to talk about, I wouldn't mind riding with one of you, one of the pickup, if you have like a boom truck or whatever, because I know of several areas and we've gotten a lot of calls of large trash that individuals would not be able to pick up. Mattresses, couches, it is unreal, the amount of furniture. People just go find a place out on a rural road and dump their trash. So anyway, thank you very much. Any questions anyone has for us?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to you and your staff at WCRE and what you're trying to do to help us with this ongoing little problem. And we thank you very much.
Thanks, Jane.
Next, we'll call up Ms. Karen Short, who is opioid abatement coalition director.
Good morning, council. Thank you for allowing me to be here today on behalf of Alpha Behavioral Health and on behalf of the opioid abatement coalition in the county. I was hired as the director a little over two months ago, so still fairly new in this role, but we are up and running. We are partnering with the sheriff's office, with the solicitor's office, with the coroner's office, with McLeod, and with the school district, and also with DEHEC. So just want to talk to you today a little bit about the RX and illicit drug summit that we just attended. Just give you some information on what we learned there. These will be strategies and things that we will use in this coalition going forward. And also just to update you on a few things that we have coming up. First of all, we attended this RX and illicit drug summit down in Atlanta, and it was four days at the Georgia World Congress Center. This summit has been going on for years. It's put on by Hal Rogers. He's a congressman from Kentucky. And basically, the theme of it this year was addressing the opioid epidemic in the country and the changing landscape of these illicit drugs and how we kind of have to change our approach in prevention efforts and to address the crisis. We basically started with learning a little bit about the history and how we got here. We've been in the opioid crisis more than 20 years and it's come in different waves. In the beginning of the first wave, it's kind of a toxic mix of Nixon's war on drugs policies and then a profit-driven medical system. And so in the 1990s, you have physicians really being guided toward addressing pain. And pain became the fifth vital sign. And so doctors started partnering with profit-driven pharmaceutical companies like Purdue owned by the Sackler family and pushing their Oxycontin pills. And people became addicted to those drugs. And as the landscape changed and the prescriptions got lessened, the addiction didn't go away. And so around 2010 or so, you have the overdoses and deaths on heroin because they turn to the heroin as their, to fill their addiction. And so we have a rise in overdoses and deaths there. And then heroin, of course, is opium that comes from a plant and the resources for that were lessened, so they turned to the synthetic opioids, for example, the fentanyl. And that's where we are in the market today. Some of the experts even argue that we're in a fourth wave, and that is fentanyl mixed with stimulants. So we learned some strategies for prevention. The success, we learned about the success of harm reduction campaigns. And as I come and do presentations to you on what we're doing in the coalition, a lot of it will be dealing with harm reduction. And basically, harm reduction is when you get into a vehicle and you put on a seatbelt, well, you're trying to reduce the harm if you were to get in an accident. So on someone's road to recovery, a lot of times, there are a lot of hiccups. And so we want to reduce the harm, keep that life alive and viable until we can, recovery is the end goal, but a lot of times, we have to use these harm reduction methods in our efforts to get them to recovery. We learned a lot about addressing addiction crisis in and out of the courtroom and how some federal lawmakers are trying to decriminalize drug offenses. I think I saw yesterday that marijuana is being classed down. So that's some of the, there are drug policies that will decriminalize some drug offenses. We learned about police deflection programs, police and peer, peer support in what we do is very important because someone that is a substance abuse user is more likely to listen or take advice from a peer, someone that's been there, someone that has suffered with addiction, someone that has overcame it than they are from me or a counselor that has never been through it. And so this program had peers working with their local police to do interventions to get people into treatment and into services. We also learned about the Good Samaritan law. This was something that I didn't know, that there's legal protection to people who give emergency assistance in the event of a drug overdose and call, like calling 911 or administering Narcan. And we're giving an example of a couple, boyfriend and girlfriend, who were using illicit fentanyl and the female overdosed. And so because he was afraid that he was going to get in trouble for having the drugs and her overdosing, he took her to a gas station and dropped her out, just thinking it's a high, you know, trafficked area, somebody would come along and help her, and they didn't, and she died. So, you know, he is facing criminal charges, but he could have stayed with her, called 911, administered Narcan if he had it. But if he had stayed with her and called 911, he would have legal protection under the law because he took measures to save her life. And so I think that's something that, you know, society needs to know about, the Good Samaritan law. We also learned about school prevention campaigns that target Generation Z. It's called Better Without It. And it was a campaign where they went into the schools and actually took their peers, young adults who had suffered with addiction and gave testimony on how their life changed because of substance use and how it would have been better without substance abuse. We also learned about the naloxone project. This is a model for using hospitals as naloxone sites. I know in this county, we will start with the detention center as our first naloxone site. But I would also like to put naloxone boxes in government buildings, the courthouse. But this model was using hospitals as naloxone sites. We also learned some options for treatment. And it's expanding access, care in rural areas. This is something we actually already do at Alpha. We have partnered with Care South, and we offer MAT, which is Medical Assisted Treatment, through them and the mobile unit. So they come to us Tuesdays and Thursdays and administer Suboxone. They don't offer Vivitral because there's a healthy, health risk there with having needles on a mobile unit. But they do do Suboxone. And for pregnant mothers, they do SubuTeX because they can't have Suboxone. But this model was showing how these mobile units are spreading to give people more of an access to treatment. And so also, we learned that we need to reduce stigma and try to get primary care. We're partnering with our doctors and our primary care physicians to really have them start treating opioid use disorder and substance use disorder within their primary care. We were given the model by Dr. Emel, he's an addictionologist. You know, he's saying, he's comparing it to diabetes. If someone comes in your office with a diabetic crisis because their insulin resistance is up or they're not taking their meds correctly, then you're going to treat them and you're going to treat them ongoing. And a lot of people with substance abuse do not have long-term, no healthcare, but it's our job to get them, link them with primary care. And it's, and it's primary care's job to help us to continue to treat them long-term with their disorder. And another point of that is we learned about don't drop the baton. And this is just saying that treatment is kind of like a team sport. They go to the hospital, then they need to come, they need to go to primary care, they need to go to mental health, they need to go to behavioral health. And it's up to all of us to make a collaborative effort to treat the individual. Enhancing recovery, we learned about a recovery to work model that helps individuals gain meaningful employment once they are in recovery. And also about helping them, a lot of individuals either lose custody or separated from their families when they use substances. So we learned about giving them resources and helping them. They're re-entering into society, but they're also re-entering into their family units too. So helping them with that. We also took some courses on enduring an emergent threat with these synthetic opioids. And this was eye-opening for me. The only thing I knew about fentanyl coming into this job is it was dangerous and that it had killed a loved one of mine. But fentanyl is a very potent synthetic opioid. It's very accessible and it's very cheap. The seizures at our southern border are more and more each year. I think last year, we were told there was enough fentanyl seized to kill every person in America. It takes a very minute amount to be lethal, only two milligrams. It is 50 times stronger than heroin and it's 100 times stronger than morphine. We learned a lot about how it's trafficked, how the materials come from China and go to Mexico and a lot of that. But the really emergent threat now is the poly-drug combinations. So you have fentanyl mixed with stimulants, you have fentanyl mixed with cocaine, you have fentanyl mixed with methamphetamines, you have fentanyl mixed with biobenzos as well. And we also learned about emerging threat, not that these are new, but just that they are finding this more. Nitazines, which is also a synthetic opioid, that is more potent than fentanyl. And we also learned about xylazine, which is trank. It's an animal tranquilizer. Narcan does not work on xylazine because xylazine is not an opioid. So there's no or opioid overdose reversal method for xylazine. And it's often, often mixed with fentanyl for enhanced effect. They are finding more carfentanil as well. It's another synthetic opioid, never meant for human consumption. This was only meant to tranquilize large mammals like elephants. It's 100 times stronger than fentanyl and 10,000 times stronger than morphine. So these poly-drug combinations, the mixing of fentanyl with other drugs is the main driver in the opioid crisis right now. They are seizing more and more and more at the border, which means more and more and more is coming onto the streets. So these poly-drug analogues and compositions are going to be an ongoing threat, which is why we're going to have to try to change the way in which we address addiction and the ways in which we reduce harm and try to get people into recovery. Just a few things on what we're working on at the coalition right now is a big part of my platform will be Narcan saturation. Narcan is the oil that we use, opioid overdose reversal method. So we want to put, we are in the process of putting a harm reduction vending machine at the county detention center. And this vending machine will have Narcan, it'll have fentanyl test strips, it'll have xylazine test strips, it'll also have some hygiene kits in there. Someone being released from incarceration is at their highest risk for overdose because they detoxed and their tolerance is low. And most of the time in detox, they're sick. So when they get out, they have that proclivity to go use because they want to ease those symptoms. So they're at the highest risk for an overdose at that time, which that is the reason that the machine is going there to address that first. But as I said, I'd like to put Narcan vending or Narcan boxes in other buildings going forward. And those would be the Narcan vending boxes. I'd like to get one at the YMCA. I am working with my connection at McLeod to see if I can get one there. I would like one to go in the courthouse. But we are also working with the coroner's office to get them fingerprinting scanner. And I learned from Sheriff Streeter the other day, they would also like a finger, some fingerprinting tools too. So in the future, I'll be writing for grants for the sheriff's department to also get the same fingerprinting machines that the coroner's office is getting. We'll also be doing a media campaign, already working with PDRTA to get some mobile billboards on their cutaways. Transportation is another barrier for people seeking treatment and in recovery. So also want to make our new building a PDRTA stop. I'm on the board at Care First, which is the funding arm for Care South, and we kind of do the PDRTA route. So I'm glad to see the stops coming up through here and up towards Pageland. I think that'll be beneficial to us in getting people in treatment also. We definitely will partner with the radio station and do some radio, radio ads and also in the link in Progressive Journal. Working already with SERPs marketing to build us a coalition website so we can have resources online for people to access. I'm actively searching for two master's level interns, have interviews today, hope those go well. They will also be doing clinical hours and they will help me with coalition needs, but they will also be doing clinical hours where they will do counseling with people in treatment. And we will have our first coalition meeting Wednesday, the 15th at 11:00. You all are welcome to come. The topic will be harm reduction and Narcan saturation. Location TBA. I hope that we're in the new building and able to have it there. But if not, maybe at the YMCA. Is there anything, any questions for me? I know that was a lot, but.
Sound like you've got a full plate.
I do.
I thank you for what you're doing and I'm sure our citizens of our county do also. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, we'll move down to item seven, public comments. Before we ask for public comments, and while we welcome all comments, all comments should be limited to four minutes per speaker, 20 minutes per subject. Is anyone that wish to address counsel? Good morning. Please state your, please state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Stevenson Pierre. My address is 326 Yuga Street, Shahuwala, South Carolina. Mr. Chairman, the reason that I'm, I am here today is because on last month, your budget meeting, when your colleague made a racial, a racist remark, and as a leader of a civil rights organization, I was very offended by him to make the statement that he made as a, as a electoral official. The budget committee met, and as you've been recorded, the young lady asked what time we're gonna be here? And somebody responded, maybe five. But Douglas Curtis, Mr. Curtis, now we had a budget meeting and his statement come out his mouth was, if we was at a Black event, we would be here all day. I didn't know. If he, if say, if you was at the Black churches event, we probably will be here all day. I think that also very racist of you, Mr. Curtis. And I'm very offended because also my father is a Baptist pastor. All Black churches don't stay in events all day. And for even, even when you make the statement, Ms. Burns? And for even when you make the statement, Ms. Burns, before she says, she said I was very offensive by your statement. You still didn't say anything. You continue laughing like you was a joke and is not being fair as a county council. Come and let her should not be coming at your lips and knowing that you are being recorded. So now that got me wonder what else you be saying? And I still didn't hear you apologize at all. And yes, I'm a civil rights leader. I look for stuff like that. I look for stuff like that. And you didn't just offend me? You offended Ms. Burns? You offended all Black pastors. We got some great Black pastors along here. I suggest next time, Mr. Curtis, you be mindful of what you let come out your mouth.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address counsel? Not we'll move down to item eight, public hearings. This is a public hearing granting an easement to CCNW Development for a sanitary sewer line at our Lynch's River Industrial Park. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Mr. Conklin. Is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is now open. Is anyone wishing to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, I assume that the same two will make the motion and the second to close the hearing?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is now closed. We'll move down to item nine A. This is the ordinance granting this easement. This is the third reading. Is there a motion to approve the third reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rivers.
Second.
Second by Ms. Burns. Is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Move down to item nine B, which is the Walmart-Fianlu ordinance, second reading. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rivers, second by Mr. Conklin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move down to item nine C, which is the 2425 Harris Creek Rule Fire Department Budget Ordinance, second reading. Ms. Burns, I assume you'll make that motion?
I do.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Move down to item nine D, which is the 2425 Harris Creek Rule Fire Department Budget Ordinance, second reading. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Burns, second by Mr. Conklin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Move down to item nine E, which is the 2425 Alligator Rule Fire Department Budget Ordinance, second reading on that. Motion by Mr. Conklin, second by Mr. Smallwood. Is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Move down to item nine F, the 2425 General Fund Budget Ordinance, second reading. Ms. Burns, a motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We will move down to item nine G, which is the GeoBond Ordinance, first reading. Is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Mr. Curtis? Mr. Conklin, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Move down to item nine H. This is the ordinance authorizing to purchase of property from and sale of property to the town of Chesterfield. This is a first reading by title only. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Ford. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Item nine I, this is the Mobile Home Subdivision Ordinance, first reading by title only. Ms. Anderson, I assume you'll make that motion?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Ford. Is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Item 10, there are no standing committee reports. We move down to item 11. Call on Ms. Anderson for an update on the PD Council of Governments.
And Joette Dukes is here. She's our executive director and thank you so much for coming. Please correct anything that I don't have rights. You're welcome to chime in. I have the privilege of serving on the board and along with others on our council or on PD COGS board, that I'm on the executive board. And when we get updates, I'm always impressed with the work that's being done at our COG. And COG stands for Council of Governments. And we are members, our county is a member, and so we pay a membership fee, but for that, we receive immense resources with engineering, with workforce development, with planning, economic development. I just thought I'd share a couple of things that I've learned from my last PD COG meeting. And like I said, Ms. Dukes, if I need to add anything, please let me know. But I was just, I was so encouraged of what's coming to our county. And the first thing I wanted to share is workforce development, the incumbent worker training awards. Our county received two awards. And one company was Carpenter Technologies, which is specialty alloys, processed parts for aerospace, defense, and medical. They received a $19,000 grant. And then Carolina Canners, which manufactures and distributes aluminum cans, received a $26,357 grant. And so that totals $45,667 out of the $99,000 that was awarded. So I thought Chesterfield County came out pretty good on that. And what those funds do, they help employees to raise their status and they provide training within the company. So it's to help the company's employees improve themselves and improve their status. So I thought that was wonderful that two of our companies in the county received those monies. Also, with engineering projects, the contract has been awarded for Boyd Lane and Savannah Drive off of West Market Street Extension, and the work should begin mid-May. And I know that some of you already know this from your committees, but I just think it's important to share it with everybody. With planning and economic development projects, I can be more specific if you want me to, but the CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant, we've received $1.6 million worth of grants for the county, and those for two fire trucks and then the Trawl Raw Water Line. And then for the South Carolina Infrastructure Investment Program, which is for rural infrastructure, we received about $21 million for the county, which, and that's impressive to me. It's a $10 million Chesterfield County Rural Water, which we all know about, we've been discussing that for a few months. And then the Trawl Water and Sewer System Improvement, which is $10.5 million. And the Chesterfield County Water Sewer Study, $460,000. And then the Council on Aging and Library Services, which we already celebrated the book mobile with that. But anyway, I just thought that in addition to them, we've been talking about how they've helped us with our joint planning commission and writing the new comprehensive plan. I just wanted you all to know what else was going on with COG.
Thank you. Ms. Dukes, would you stand up just a second so we recognize you? We certainly do appreciate what you do and what your organization does. We've all seen the benefits of it. We thank you very much for taking the time out of your busy schedule to join us this morning. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Sure.
We'll move down to item 12, which is a bid award for a lease purchase on a roll-off truck. Ms. Stanley?
A request for proposals was issued to six local and regional banks, and staff received the two proposals. First Citizens Bank with an interest rate of 4.68 and Community Leasing Partners with a rate of 5.86. And upon advice from our bond attorney, staff recommends that the proposal from First Citizens Bank to be accepted at the rate of 4.68. It is therefore a request that counsel approve the acceptance of this proposal from First Citizens, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept this bid?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Burns, second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Stanley. Item 13, I don't believe we have any unfinished business, ain't no new business. We move down to board appointments, reappointments to our CHESCO service board. Mr. Ford has requested that reappoint Mr. Jerry McManus. Is that in form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Also, Mr. Curtis seeking to reappoint Mr. Henry Suggs, is that the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Mr. Ford. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. And Ms. Anderson, reappoint Ms. Kay Spears?
Yes, sir.
That's in the form of a motion, is there a second? Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Okay, we'll move down to item 16, administrator's report. Mr. Ubanks?
Yes, sir. I need to bring y'all up to date on something that Ms. Lear and I had to do spur of the moment, pretty quickly to keep from losing the option to continue with a grant. Y'all voted a few months ago for us to allow Ms. Lear to go after an RIA grant at Lynch's River Industrial Park to extend the water line. Found out on short notice that that did not meet the criteria because it was not tying in, the section that we were looking at doing did not tie in with the water line on 601, which Rural Water was getting, going after a grant also. Those two lines needed to tie together. So we were fixing to miss out on that grant. And so spur of the moment, we had to re, we laid this on y'all's desk, a little drawing. The black section in here that's drawn out is a section, and you'll see that it ties in with 601 now. So the same water lines, we was, we just needed to tweak it a little bit and just wanted to bring y'all up to date with that. So we're going to continue on in trying to get this grant for the extension of that water line. Did I tell that right, Ms. Lear?
Yes, you did better than I did.
All right. And that's it. That's it. Okay. Any council member have any comments?
I do have one.
Okay.
On May the 17th, Dr. Mac Leopard will be giving a presentation at the Chesterfield County Coordinating Council concerning a texting system for medical care. It's absolutely free. You can access that system as many times as you would like. They also provide video or audio connection if it's needed. There's no insurance, no copayment. And if you would like more information, please come to the Chesterfield County Coordinating Council meeting, May the 17th, 10:30 a.m., and this is at the YMCA.
Okay. Thank you, Burns, for that information. Anybody else give anything?
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Ubanks, some few months ago, the council approved, or committee approved some money for rescue squads and fire departments. Rescue squads are requesting those funds that have already been approved. So I'm asking Mr. Ubanks if he'll follow up on that to get them those funds.
He'll check on, I'm sure we'll check into that. Anyone else? If not, there is a need to go into executive session. Mr. Ruffin, would you please explain?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are three items. The first two are pursuant to Section 30-4-70, subsection A5. That is for discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion or provision of services encouraging the location expansion of industries or other businesses in areas served by the county. Those two items are, one, Lynch's River Industrial Park, potential sale of property. And then item two, a project codename Synergy. And then under 18B, that would be pursuant to Section 30-4-70, subsection A2. And that is for discussion of contractual arrangements, received legal advice that would be subject to attorney-client privilege regarding the following, and that would be potential locations for the detention center. And as noted on the agenda, counsel may take action by voting on any of those matters after exiting executive session.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Burns, second by Mr. Smallwood. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go into executive session, but before we do so, let's take a 10-minute break. Go into executive session, but before we do, let's take a ten-minute break.
Out of executive session, and while we were in executive session, no motions were made and no votes were taken. Is there a motion to approve the letter of intent with the modifications that Mr. Ruffner has cited?
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we approve sending the letter of intent back to Project PPL's agent with the two revisions recommended by counsel.
Motion, Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Is none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Okay, I don't think there's anything further, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now adjourned.